Order Secretary Calderol.
Schubert.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Olivas.
Here.
Arroyo.
Here.
Cefuentes, absent. Lache.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever-
Alrighty. So, tonight we're gonna switch it up a little bit because we've got a lot of young students in the audience and we would like you to, if you want to stay, fine, but we'd like you to get home early, so uh, let's do the community relations report first.
Hola a todos, hello to everyone. We're always excited when we can acknowledge our students. Today, we have two athletic teams we want to recognize, and they've done an amazing job this year. Congratulations first to our Girls Varsity Cross Country Conference Champions. This is their second consecutive conference title and second in school history, and we are very proud of them. The conference consists of fourteen teams, and our Girls Varsity Cross Country Team won by seven points over Bartlett High School to gain the title. They were led by three all-conference finishers and one honorable-mentioned racer. To help me recognize our team is our East Aurora High School Principal Jennifer Mitchell, if she can come up. And we'll be calling up first the coaches, the amazing coaches that we have at East Aurora High School. And we ask that you stay up here and when we call up the athletes so we can take a great group picture. So first, we'd like to call up Head Coach Shane Gillespie. Assistant Coach Paul Wecker. And Assistant Coach Brian Taylor. Next, we would like to call up the remarkable athletes who won the conference champion, or the conference champions. And we'll start with Dianaera Unzuetta. Yaseri Salmeron. Ariana Cantarero. Giselle Alcala. Karina Perez. Melanie Mercado. Leslie Aguila. And Evelyn Hernandez. Congratulations again, and I love your sweatshirts. Those are pretty cool. Great job, and we're gonna take a great group picture.
Would the board members like to be part of it too?
Yeah.
Guys, the los padres también.
Lisa, actually you can go on the right side of uh, if you can go on the right side of the line. Lisa.
Lisa.
One on the right side.
Ready guys? Ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
Was there anything you'd like to say? You're good, alright. Thank you again. Next, the Waldo Middle School Boys Soccer Team brought home the championship title in the City of Lights Tournament for the 2024 school year. That's quite an accomplishment. The team finished the season with a nine-to-one record while scoring thirty-two goals and only giving up seven goals. Congratulations. Eileen Roberts, Principal of Waldo Middle School, will be joining me to recognize our championship team. First, we're gonna recognize our coaches. Our Head Coach Rafe Benavides. Our Assistant Coach Nicola Soto. Assistant Coach Cody Bezic. And Assistant Coach Ian Jones. And now it's time to recognize the team that made it happen and bringing home that title of City of Lights Tournament Champions. We'll start with Jose Aguirre. Oh, that's okay, okay, you let me know. How about Sebebu Amba? Okay, that's okay. We still want to say congratulations, even if they're not here. Julian Baca. Freddy Betel-Tekasko, he's not here, but still congratulations. No. Raymond Chivaka, but he's also not here, but still congratulations. Uriel Garcia Vilches. Angel Gonzalez. Uriel Gonzalez. No, not here, okay. Alexander Guevara. Pedro Guillén Patiño. Ethan Jimenez Ibanez. Alan Junes. Daniel Lopez. Maximiliano Magaña. Denzel Martinez. Not you. Isaac Melchor. Christopher Morales Pérez. Alexander Navarro. Brian Pineda Reyes. Angel Rivera Rodriguez. Dylan Rivera Sanchez. Yahira Adolfo Sanchez Quintanilla. Mercy, Mercy Wicunzi. And Jordan Young. Do I have a hat? Congratulations, guys, amazing, amazing. Now we're gonna take a group picture as soon as they're all up here. Oh, and they got the trophy too, alright. Okay. I'm about to wave.
Tighten it up, boys.
Yeah.
Alright, nice.
Look over at him.
Everybody's sorry to see the camera at this point, we'll do that. Alright, ready? One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
So, alright, is she done? So she's got everybody? Okay. At this time, if any of their parents came with them, they can, you know, and if you want to leave right now, you can. If not, please stay for the meeting. Okay. These are still going out, so, alright. Okay, so. Alrighty. Public comments, so you would have had to have, okay, a few more here, can wait a second. Alrighty, so you would have had to have signed up before seven o'clock to speak. We ask that you respect the three-minute time limit, and we ask that you respect the confidentiality of our students and staff. First speaker, Becky Ryro.
Good evening, I'm Becky Ryro, Union President. I am here tonight to introduce two schools. Is that popular? The first one is Brady. I was gonna wear the T-shirt, take one off, but I did not want to risk wardrobe malfunction, so I'm just gonna go ahead and show it to you. So the first school tonight I'm gonna introduce is Brady Elementary. They're ninety, ninety-five percent union and have over four hundred years of service to the district. They are represented by Nicole Conley and Brian Hendricks, and Nicole's with us tonight, thank you for coming. The word that comes to mind when I think of Brady is brave. They are honest and always willing to support their staff, and I really admire that. So I appreciate them coming tonight. The second school I'm gonna introduce tonight, I'm a little emotional because it's my home school. Hermas is over there. They are ninety-nine percent union, only one still left to get. They have over five hundred and seventy combined years of service to the district. They are led by their reps, Orla Gomez and Eileen Pass. Hermas is my home. It's where I came to know myself and why I stand here tonight. I imagine it's how every single one of their students feels every day. They build a community and ferociously support each other and build each other up, and I'm so proud to be part of that tradition. So, thank you. Come in.
Nicole Conley.
Hi, my name is Nicole Conley. I'm here to represent the Brady staff. Collectively, we have over four hundred years of experience in the educational sector. Tonight, I want to talk about school safety. Schools should be a safe haven for learning in, and entering the school should be imperative for an environment for both security and welcome. As an educator, my foremost concern is to ensure a calm and positive learning environment for our students. This is complicated by the fact that our indoor cameras to the outside entrances have been inoperative since the beginning of the academic school year. Consequently, the office staff relies solely on the external cameras to view individuals ringing the doorbell, which allows them to identify the adult and verify their identification. It does not allow them to monitor the individual's movements as soon as they are inside the building. As a result, the adult may remain without, out of sight for a minute or two unless the security officer is present. And although we are fortunate to have a security officer on some days, they, on the days they are absent, it isn't a challenge to ensure that adults entering the school go directly to the office. In case you are unaware of how Brady is laid out, you enter in door one and then you go up the stairs and down a hallway to get to the office. You pass three classrooms on the way and have access to staircases that lead to other classrooms before you enter the office. To further compound these concerns is all of the school shootings happening around the world. For nearly a year, Brady teachers have expressed safety concerns to our administration. In discussing with Dr. Norel, we mentioned the safety report, she mentioned a safety report being prepared and that there was an ongoing evaluation for protocols and measures to enhance the safety of our faculty. We seek clarification on what specific actions progress in a timeline for their implementation. Until these measures are enacted, we must continue to work under a cloud of insecurity, knowing that there is no best to temporarily contain individuals entering the building, nor an office situated near the entrance to monitor such individuals effectively. As previously noted, there are multiple pathways for adults to take into the classroom en route to, into classrooms en route to the office. The Brady staff has been assured for years that a change will be made, and we have observed discussions among various stakeholders regarding potential improvement to enhance the safety of our school environment. We greatly appreciate the efforts and urge that a solution be implemented to expedientious, as quickly as possible, every day that our students and our staff are at risk until this is made. Thank you.
Melinda Thomas.
Officially reached the age that I have to use the reading glasses for everything. So. Melinda Thomas, two fifty-six Cockings Drive, Sugar Grove. I'm here to speak about behavior and safety concerns throughout the district. One of the biggest concerns is occurring at our elementary schools, where staff are being subjected on a regular basis to students who kick, bite, and spit. The current solution? Staff are being provided with arm and shin guards and plastic face guards to protect themselves. Now clearly, a child who acts out their frustrations in this way needs additional support, but what about the staff members working with that child? Staff who try to defend themselves are sometimes reprimanded or even reported to DCFS for putting hands on a child, but who else is protecting these staff members? What supports are being provided to them? Telling staff to put on their equipment to gear up for another assault is not a solution. Some students are behaving in this way on a near-daily basis, and they receive few, if any, consequences. Why are staff being forced to wear protective gear rather than the students being removed from the classroom or additional supports being provided for them in the classroom? These behaviors also do not occur in a vacuum. What is being done to connect the parents with social services to help the family address these behaviors and their underlying causes? And at what point do we decide that a student needs to be outplaced because they need more support than we can give them? Although most students age out of the kicking and biting phase by middle school, the older versions of those behaviors continue to occur at all of the middle schools and continuing on to the high school. Disrespectful and outpersest are a problem. At our faculty meeting today at the high school, we were informed that administration is working on creating more consistency throughout the district and that they are developing materials for MTSS, multi-tiered student supports, for those who don't know, at all levels. The first expectation they are focusing on is respect. What does it look like and how can we encourage it? I think consistent messaging throughout the district and explicit teaching at all grade levels of what respect looks like are wonderful first steps. However, what do we do in the meantime with students who demonstrate gross disrespect in the hallways? I know our administration are trying, but we continue to have issues with students wandering the halls well after the tardy bell. I had a colleague share with me the other day that they went up to a group of students after the minute bell had rung to tell them politely to get to class. They were completely ignored, and when they persisted with one particular student, his sister came over swearing and saying the teacher had no business telling him what to do. Too many staff, teachers, PPAs, sometimes even administrators, are walked past, dismissed, or treated to verbal disrespect. How can we begin teaching those students about respect? How can we help their parents have those conversations with them as well? As we all know, a small portion of our students cause a huge portion of the problems. Most of our students are great, but they are impacted when they see these students receiving no discipline. When we don't provide our students with appropriate consequences for these behaviors, we are setting them up for a more difficult future. If they do not learn that actions have consequences, they are likely to end up with much uglier consequences in the future. Thank you.
Nancy Figueroa.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Figueroa, resident of seventeen seventy-one Nancy Lane in Aurora. I am a teacher at Brady and I am a mother at Cowherd. I'm here today, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding the ongoing issue of class sizes at Brady in my third-grade classroom. And I understand it's happening in other schools too. At the start of the school year, I was faced with a challenge. My class list, which had twenty-seven students as of May, when we left, increased to forty students by the beginning of the school year. I don't know how this happened, but I know that school enrollment numbers are supposed to be monitored, and no additional teacher was assigned to third grade. This large class size put immediate pressure on my health and the quality of education I could provide. For more than a week, I managed a group of thirty-nine to forty students waiting to hear about steps the district would take to support me and alleviate this burden. Unfortunately, despite being informed that the district was working on a solution, the only action taken was to offer me two additional prep times. I currently have thirty-one students, and it still stretches the limits of an effective classroom, individualized attention, and instructional quality. Large class sizes hinder the ability to give personalized feedback every day, manage diverse needs, and maintain an effective, an engaging, I'm sorry, an engaging learning environment. In addition, many of my students need support to reach grade level. I hope you can recognize that such large classes are not good long-term solution. Thank you for considering this matter seriously and for supporting the necessary changes to improve the educational environment for all of our students. Thank you.
Includes our public speakers, so next we will have our Student Board Member Report. You can come to the podium.
Good evening, board members. As the month of October has come to an end, I can generally say that it was filled with meaningful achievements. This has been a month filled by inspiration for growth. For our soon-to-be graduating seniors, they have invested a lot of time with early college applications, while others have begun solidifying their post-graduation plans. These seniors are excited to achieve such significant milestones. I am grateful to see their dedication, and I sincerely wish them all the best as they embark on their next phase in their academic journey. Before I move forward, I would like to thank the staff that makes the College and Career Center so welcoming, supportive, and essential for all of our top kids. I would also like to thank Dr. Norel and all other supporting staff for her great support of campus tour opportunities. These experiences are so valuable to our student population. They allow for exposure to college life, culture, and serve as a substantial motivation. These campus tours bring hope, especially for all the students who are first generation or from a lower-income household. These tours bring a new light to East Aurora. On October ninth, our school held a college fair where over sixty colleges and universities were present. The event allowed for both curious and shy students to interact directly with admission concerts. Students' questions were answered and left several students with further interest. In terms of extracurricular activities, the girls volleyball team brought back teacher appreciation when players recognized teachers who have had a significant impact on their lives. Alongside this, our football team was cheered on by tailgate parties that would elevate our levels of school pride. These casual events brought our school committee together in cheering on our classmates. This was true, especially on October eighteenth during the East versus West of our cross-trip rivalry football game. Our entire city was full of immense excitement. This one hundred-twenty-year-old rivalry created enthusiasm among students, families, staff, and alumni. Moreover, I see it appropriate to congratulate our girls cross-country team who accomplished a remarkable achievement by winning back-to-back conference championships. Later in the month, East Aurora organized a scholarship night on October twenty-ninth. The focus for the event was for students and their parents to learn about financial support and scholarship opportunities. It was successful in helping our student families understand the importance of college planning. Lastly, our school's name was placed in a Positive Spotlight feature on CBS. It was a proud moment for our student body as the accomplishments of our marching band culinary program, NGR2C, Deca store, football team, and other exceptional programs were highlighted and celebrated. Our students are capable of developing proficient abilities and commitment efforts to grow in both academic and personal directions. Finally, I would like to express my deepest gratitude in all of our teachers, staff, administrators, for your constant commitment to enhancing our school and district. Thank you for your time.
Alrighty. And then we have, now we're on to the IASB resolutions for this November, so Saul, if you would like to report on some of them, and then the board can take a consensus if we want him to, you know, vote the other way, that it's not, you know, most of these have been, most of them have been guidance with the IASB, but you know, we can always go another direction if we don't feel so. So, anyway, Saul, your report.
Thank you, yes. We have six resolutions that are being presented at the ISB Committee in November. The following six are, have been recommended to adopt. The first one is dual language, allowing students to be able to receive credit as the, if they do receive the seal of by literacy. So as, that one was recommended to follow as presented. Number two is the EFB Authorized Charter School Funding that allowed, based on the equitable formula to how our districts get funding. This resolution allows the committee to go back and provide additional funding for those charter schools. There's a tax increment funding accountability, phased law, healthcare coverage, and a polling place amendment to Position State seven, seven oh eight, which this one kind of just allowed the district to be able to determine if there is no safety for the students and they can, the local will allow to keep the building open or closed as a national holiday. So on this one, I don't know if you guys have any questions on the following motion or recommendations to adopt. I personally kind of felt, as I was reading these, the EFB Authorized Charter School Funding, number two, instead of saying do adopt, to say no on that one.
I, I agree with that. We had to argue this the last time. It cost the school district a lot of, a lot of time and effort and legal funds to do that, so I say we, we go against what they are recommending.
It was about twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, no, about twenty seventeen?
Yes.
We had this before, it cost a lot of-
It costs a lot of man-hours, a lot of man-hours. It's going to cost a lot of, a chunk of change. And we were supposed to pay for a building on top of it all. And this before we were in better financial shape. So I, I concur with Mr. Saul, Mr. Olivas and Madam President.
I agree.
I'll defer to the experts. I'm fine with it.
So all these, all the below resolutions will be placed on a consent agenda for boarding during the ISB delegate assembly. If any are removed from the consent agenda, so what I heard is that we will adopt dual-language resolution, say no on EFB authorized charter school funding, adopt, say yes on tax increment, financial accountability, TIFs, face law, healthcare coverage and polling plates.
Other than, I wish they would have just had a lot stronger language with the TIF districts, but, but I absolutely say do adopt on TIF districts because they are hurting all of our taxing bodies right now. And you know, it's something that's very cognizant that we need to be aware of. So, but it's a good first step, at least that they're, they're addressing it. So I think that's great. So, so now if we want to take, you know, we should take a consensus to.
I concur.
Yep. Okay, I do too. How about Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. Passes. Okay, so we have given direction. Now, the tax levy presentation, that is with Mike Engle here.
All right.
Ready, Andy?
Okay. Well, welcome tonight. We're actually going to be presenting the levy in its final form tonight. So next slide, we're going to go through the timetable. And this is, should be pretty familiar. Back on October 7th, we went through the tax levy timeline for the FMP Committee. We presented the 2024 tax levy and alternate bond abatement levy and the recommendation to approve the estimated tax levy. Tonight on November the 4th, we're a recommendation to adopt the 2024 tax levy. The tax levies due date is December 31st, needs to be filed with the county clerk. In spring of 2025, will be the final property values will be released. Abatements will be finalized and taxes are billed to taxpayers. In June, the first installment on the tax bill is due to the county clerk. And then in September of 2025, the second installment is due to the county clerk. Next slide. So this is a breakdown of property values. As you could see, most of the taxes that come into the district, 80% are made up by residential. A little bit more than 14% are made up by commercial farm, representing practically zero, state railroad at about 1% and industrial at 5%. Next slide. So this is the breakdown of revenues for 2024, non-audited. As you could see, a vast majority of the district's funds come in through evidence-based funding, which we're just discussing a little bit earlier. 52%, 7% from the state, 22% from federal grants, real estate taxes at 14%, CPRT at 2% and other local sources at 3%. Next slide. So these are the factors that are used to calculate the tax levy. Known factors are the 2023 equalized assessed valuation at a little bit more than $1.1 billion. We know the 2023 tax extension, not including bonds, was $36,444,442. The consumer price index was 3.4%. Please remember that we are capped to 5%, so it's obviously under that. Maximum levy extension for existing property in 2024 was $37,790,171. Unknown factors at this time is the new equalized assessed valuation for 2024. Right now, the estimate is up approximately by 14.4% at approximately $1.26 billion. New limiting rate for 2024 is also unknown and new property for 2024 is unknown, but there is an estimate that came in at about $3.5 million. Next slide. So how do we stack up and compare to other school districts that are around us? As you can see, we have the lowest tax rate around. We are that light blue, we are just under 4%. And this is directly from the King County Clerk's office. As you could see, every other district has a much higher taxing rate. Next slide. So here's the levy request, the breakdown by fund. And the educational fund is 18.2 million, operations and maintenance at 7.2, transportation at 5.5, working cash at 514,000, I am rough at 1.5 million, social security at 3.15 million, special education at 2.2 million, total cap levy there of $38,264,000, bond and interest at 6.5 million, less the abatement at $712,000. So the total tax levy is $44,827, sorry, $44,827,483. Next slide. So as of right now, the district is levying 4.99%. The Board of Education will further reduce it again, reducing the tax burden for the local property owners by $712,000. Next slide. This is the new public act that the district enacted that's new for 2024, 2025 school year. So this gives the last three years average expenditures for the ad fund, which is Fund 10, Fund 20, which is B and G, Fund 40, which is transportation, and the total amounts. And that last line down there at the bottom is the average expenditure of those. And the new public act pretty much states that if the district is over 2.5 times that amount in fund balance, that we need to do an excess reserve spend down, which we are nowhere near that amount. So we're just showing this in compliance with the new act for, for tonight.
Okay.
And then next slide, any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you guys so much.
No, but I do have a comment on the property values type slide. I don't know if you want to throw that back up, whoever's controlling that. I think it was the second slide. Oh yeah, it was pie chart. You know, I mean, this is just really a reminder when I see this of how small our commercial tax bases in East Aurora. When you compare that, I would like to see a chart next time on 204 on Batavia that has the outlet mall, that West Aurora that has Orchard Road. And I mean, we have Farnsworth Avenue and a little of the downtown. And that's why I really echo your comments in that about the TIF and redoing that because we have a good chunk of the downtown, but it's all in a TIF. And so it's good that that legislation is coming, or at least the IASB is working on that because this says it all right here in terms of how this district and for years has really tried to be a good steward to the taxpayers because of this, because the impact would be substantial on them.
It's not the 1960s, that's for sure. Should have seen this back in the 60s, probably the opposite.
Probably was, but unfortunately.
All the factories are gone.
Pie chart is, is most of it's in a TIF district. So we don't even get that, you know? So it's important to keep what our residents and encourage them to, you know, buy houses, remodel houses, keep the taxes lower so they can afford them. So I think we're doing the right thing. It's just unfortunately, we are stuck in a bad situation with, with the city and not having enough industrial businesses and commercial businesses.
And very little left developable land, you know? So we're, we're pretty landlocked, so.
Yep. Okay. So does anybody have any other questions? Okay. Alrighty. Motion to adopt the proposed 2024 Certificate of Tax Levy and related board resolutions as presented.
Some move.
Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Arroyo. Arroyo?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
LaFche?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution abating the taxes here in Fork Levy for the 2024 to pay debt service on the Series 2016B, Series 2020A, Series 2020C, alternative bonds.
Some move.
Second.
Alrighty, Secretary call the roll.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cefuentes? He's absent. Arroyo?
Yes.
LaFche?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the res-
I'm sorry. Schubert?
Yes.
My apologies.
I thought, you know, you were, okay, yes. Alrighty. Motion to approve the resolution abating the portion of the taxes here in Fork Levy for the year 2024 to pay debt service on the general obligation refunding school bond Series 2020B.
Some move.
Second.
Secretary call the roll.
LaFche?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Here. Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda is listed.
Some move.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary call the roll.
Olivas?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
LaFche?
Yes.
Okay, finance and personnel. We met today and actually, actually today we met and we just said a couple of things, but we are approving some emergency special education teachers. So that was teacher's assistance, so that was discussed. So, motion to approve the emergency authorization for three one-on-one special education teacher assistants at Brady School, Cowherd School and East High School.
Some move.
Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
LaFche?
Yes.
Curriculum and programs, that would be Saul tonight.
Yes, thank you. The curriculum meeting met back in October 21st, 2024. We had the SIP plan, School Improvement Plan by Barbara Elementary Administrators. The summary included 61% of students K to fifth met their NWEA MAP, 45.2% of students K to five met their NWEA MAP projected growth, targeted in English, the first one was math, 53.2% of students K through fifth met their NWEA MAP projected growth, targeted in Spanish reading, 99% of students received two or fewer behavioral referrals, Barwell maintained an average daily attendance of 93%. Barwell maintained a summative designation of commendable. We also looked at CFAs and NWMF data and they will continue to increase proficiency on IAR scores. Goal one, the educational equity. Their goal was, is for May, by May of 2025, 97% of Barwell Elementary will receive 2% of fewer behavioral referrals and team will meet, use MTSS framework and SASHL post survey to identify and implement resource and intervention to address the SEL needs of students. Second step curriculum will use to provide daily SEL instructions. Goal number two, operational excellence. Barwell will maintain an average daily attendance of 95% for the 2024, 2025 school year. Barwell team will monitor daily and weekly attendance rates and team will communicate daily with families of students who are absent frequently. Our goal number three, student achievement. Student, 60% of Kinder through fifth grade Barwell Elementary student will meet or exceed their expected reading growth goal as measured by winter 2025 NWEA MAP assessment. The team will provide targeted small group reading and map instruction during subject areas during their wind time, which is what I need. More staff will participate in professional development, opportunities, strength, literacy instruction. Goal four was 65% of K to fifth Barwell Elementary student will meet or exceed their expected math growth goals. We also have the Brady Elementary School Improvement Plan presented by their administration. 65% of Brady students met their projected growth in math. 50% of Brady students met projected growth in reading. Their average daily attendance for last school year was 93%. 60% of Brady students in grade three to fifth scored at or above a level three in X's, developing on reading and increased from 53% in 2023. Their goal number one, educational equity. It says by February 2025, Brady will reduce major ODRs, fighting physical aggression, bullying and harassment by 10% from 2023, 2024 school year. Brady will follow the second step scope and sequence. Brady will implement school-wide behavior incentive based on class power goals. Goal number two, operational excellence. Brady's school will maintain an average daily attendance of 95% for the 2025, 20, excuse me, 2024, 2025 school year. The team will review attendance data weekly and monthly. MTSS team will monitor attendance and behavior. Goal three, by winter of 2024, 65 of Brady students will meet or exceed their expected growth in reading and measured by NWA MAP. Teacher will use and administer district-created CFAs and will use at grade level curriculum and differentiate small group instructions. Goal four, by winter of 2024, 65% of Brady students will meet or exceed their expected growth, a goal in math and measured by NWA MAP. Teacher will monitor I ready, my learning plan required requirement of 50 minutes per week individualized practice. Sorry, that was a lot. There's also the, we had an update on the literacy update presentation by Secretary Director of Language Acquisition and Early Learning, Dr. Rita Guzman, and our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Teresa Vemmer. We, well, that was Ulaia who was not here. The curriculum council met with vendors and they scored the resource base using a rubric focused on alignment with dual-language principles and the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan. Teachers were surveyed and they received a 55% response. The survey indicated to continue a strong emphasis on foundational literacy and writing. The two pilot products that are moving on, I'm assuming started today according to the presentation, was HMH and Benchmark. 60 teachers volunteered to pilot. The pilot will be, there was training to be held on October 28th and 30th, and the pilot should be taking place from November 4th and conclude on December 20th. We also had a presentation by the Associate Superintendent of School Leadership, Jalissa Martinez, talking a little bit more about teach-class training memo, which is a program that we already have in place, but we wanted to make sure that the new staff was also on board and there will be an action item also later on after this presentation. And there's a proposal. We also had a disposal of outdated and expired chemicals from Fred Rogers Magnet Academy. Will there also be a motion on that? Attendance enrollment, as of October 15, 2024, there were 12,324 students enrolled. And as of October 15, 2024, district average attendance is 91.38. And then our meeting was adjourned at 3:28. Our next curriculum board meeting will be in November 18 here at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And I believe there's a.
Couple of resolutions, a couple of resolutions, or motions.
Right. Motion to approve the Teachstone class training proposal in the amount of $21,500.
Some move.
Secretary call the roll.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
LaFche?
Yes.
There's also a motion to approve the resolution of disposal of outdated and expired chemicals at the Fred Rogers Magnet Academy.
Some move.
Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Arroyo?
Yes.
LaFche?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Okay, buildings and grounds.
So we had our meeting earlier this evening. Our next meeting will be in Monday, December 2nd. There's no action items this evening.
Okay. Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing student discipline, workman's compensation and the appointment, employment, performance compensation and dismissal of a specific employee.
Some move.
Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Schubert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
LaFche?
Yes.
I didn't say that. I said. She comes in, she works four hours.
Now, do your math.
No, yes, I attend all. Active listening. None of them. They are not on the board these last two years, and the last three of them are on the board. And then. It is, I've never met this, this man hired to my first day with Williams. And it's like, my gosh, we should think that for you. Not related, never, no, no, no. I get a lot of emails, though, that I don't.
I didn't know that told us.
That is a good one.
It was a really short.
Yeah. We'll be back after.
See you. See you later.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.